Thank you. Welcome to everyone that showed up in our spread out meeting here. And before we start, I just want to remind everyone to use your stage voices because we are so spread out today. And we will start by taking the roll call and finding out who all is here.
Mrs. Bohan?
Here.
Mr. Cunardie?
Here.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Here.
Mrs. Steiner?
Here.
Dr. Schulman?
Here.
Mr. Ukitis?
Here.
And Miss Chaney?
Here.
As you can see, we have Dorothy Chaney here from home because she has traveled recently. So that's what that setup is set out. That will go on to the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would ask our Superintendent Ryan Christiansen to take this.
We have a seat in front of us. Right. Our Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America. We salute the Constitution, stand for the nation, for God, and for this world with liberty and justice for all.
And then we will move on to our consent agenda, starting with approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held on March 11th of 2020. Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you, Mrs. Steiner. I have a second. Thank you, Dr. Schulman. Go ahead and take the roll.
Mr. Cunardie? Cunardie? Dr. Sitwalla? Sitwalla? Ms. Steiner? Yes. And Mr. Schulman? Yes. And Mr. Ukitis? Yes. And we will move on to approval of the minutes from the special meeting held on
March 19th of 2020. Do I have a motion to approve?
No.
Thank you, Dr. Sitwalla, a second.
Mr. Cunardie seconded.
Okay, Mr. Cunardie. Then we'll go ahead and take the roll.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Abstained.
Mr. Ukitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Abstained.
Mr. Cunardie?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is approval of the counts for the month of March. And do I have a motion to approve?
No.
Second.
Okay, so we have Mr. Cunardie and Mr. Ukitis. And we'll go ahead and take the roll.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mr. Ukitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Cunardie?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
And are there any communications from the public? Nope.
And any correspondence?
Nope.
Announcements?
Nope.
District recognition. We're keeping this meeting as short as possible, just so you all know. So we'll move on down to the superintendent's report.
And in keeping with that, I do not have a formal report prepared just to try to help move the meeting along. I would just briefly take another opportunity to thank all of our students and families and our staff for all of their tremendous efforts during this very challenging and difficult time that we have going on with the statewide school closures. I think everybody involved is doing an outstanding job, given the circumstances that we've been dealt and just collectively, we will all get through this together. And I just wish everyone to continue to best with your efforts and be well. Be well. Thank you.
Thank you. And we don't have any gifts for acceptance, so we're going to move on down to curriculum and instruction. I will have scaffold to...
Just leave it there. I will soon.
We did meet yesterday. And the two items that we looked at were the K-12 physical education curriculum and the K-12 health curriculum, both of which should have been in board docs. And so if you have a chance to look at those between now and our next meeting, they will be up for approval for a second reading. And that's it for curriculum and instruction. So that was simple. Now we'll go back to employee relations, and for that, I'll turn to Miss Ukitis.
Okay, we have some second readings of a number of handbooks. Can we take these together or do you want them separately?
I think let's act on each one separately.
Okay. I move on behalf of our committee to accept the support staff handbook. It's a second reading. Discussion?
So this is a motion from the committee to approve the 2020-2021 support staff handbook.
Correct.
Okay.
I would just briefly add, with this being a second reading, with the meeting we had yesterday, there were just some minor editorial adjustments made from the first reading, so nothing substantial, but just did want to know that there were some minor edits to like titles, subtitles, and things of that nature.
Any other questions or comments? Then we'll go ahead and take the roll.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mr. Ukitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Cunardie?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
All right, we also have before us tonight approval, or I will move on behalf of our committee, the Personnel Committee, to approve the 2020-2021 professional staff handbook as well. We've got a second reading on that, so that's an action item tonight.
So we have a motion to approve the 2020-2021 professional staff handbook. Any questions or comments on that? And just so the public knows, the board reads all these ahead of time and they're board docs, so we will go ahead and take the roll on that.
Mr. Ukitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Cunardie?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
And we also have a C under Old Business 2020-2021 Administrative Staff Handbook. That's before us for approval tonight as well. I move on behalf of our committee.
So we have a motion to approve the 2020-2021 Administrative Staff Handbook. Any questions or comments? Seeing them, we'll go ahead and take the roll.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Cunardie?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mr. Ukitis?
Yes. Under New Business, there was discussion at our last meeting about summer school pay rate adjustments. I don't know if superintendent wants to add anything to that at this time because we're not really here for approval tonight. It's just an item of discussion.
No, this was to be brought forward as an action item. I think Jenny, it is listed as an action item on the regular agenda too.
Correct.
And there's not a board document in our board docs. I could just make a brief comment on the adjusted pay proposal that we discussed in the committee, if you would like. I can kind of run through that.
Sure, I appreciate that.
What we talked in committee about was looking to make an adjustment in a manner that would, moving forward, taking effect this summer, we would eliminate what had been a small prep time or prep hour, or I think 40 minutes of prep time work into the compensation plan, that we would officially eliminate that prep component and at the same time increase the hourly rate, getting us to a point where overall the compensation would be pretty close to what it had been previously. Years ago, when there was not as much flexibility in increasing the hourly rate, there was a practice put in place of adding some additional time in the way of prep to go about increasing the overall pay rate. We don't have those restrictions anymore. Therefore, we wanted to really go with the actual work time that the staff are putting in rather than this kind of artificial 40 minutes of prep time that was added to increase the overall compensation. So the proposal that we're looking to get official action on or approval on from the board would be to, we have two different pay rates. There's a pay rate for a lot of our enrichment coursework largely at the elementary middle school level, which is currently at $25 an hour, is that correct? And then there's a different hourly rate for courses that lead to actual credit, like high school credit, high school FIAE courses, health courses, things of that nature, has been at $27 an hour. The proposal would be to eliminate the prep piece and the 40 minutes of prep per day and increase each of those hourly rates by $3 so that the new configuration would be $28 an hour for the enrichment coursework, $30 per hour for the credit bearing coursework that is taught during summer school.
I guess I move on behalf of the committee then to accept the suggested or the offered summer school pay rate adjustment. I offer that on behalf of the committee.
So the motion on behalf of committee is to approve that rate adjustment and eliminate the prep time that was previously paid at the same time. Any questions or comments? Then we'll go ahead and take the roll.
Mr. Cunardie?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mr. Ukitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Let's see, where are we? Item F, approval of wage increases for administrative and district level staff for the 2021-2020-2021 school year. And that's an action item, so I would move on behalf of our Personnel Committee to approve those said increases.
So we have a motion on behalf of committee to approve the wage increases for administrative and district level staff for 2020 to 2021 as listed on that sheet. Any questions or comments? Seeing them, we'll go ahead and take the roll.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mr. Ukitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Cunardie?
Yes.
Okay, we also have as part of our committee report the approval of the 2020-2021 bargaining agreement between board and all professional staff. I make that motion on behalf of our committee.
And I think we touched on this a little bit last month, but...
I'll just add a little further that I did give confirmation this week that the MTA did ratify the tentative agreement that our committee had worked out with them. That was an agreement for a CPI increase to be equally distributed amongst all of the members of that group. My understanding is it was pretty overwhelmingly ratified. 99% of their voting membership did approve of the bargain that we had the tentative agreement for. So I definitely would recommend that the full board approve the tentative agreement that we had with MTA.
And just to refresh your memories, when we did the proposal exchanges between the board and the MTA, they were exactly the same. So it was a short meeting, the shortest on record, I think. So we have a motion to approve the 2020-2021 bargaining agreement between the board and professional staff, and we'll go ahead and take the roll.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mr. Ukitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Cunardie?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
And finally, then we go into the actual contract renewal, approval of the 2020-2021 contract renewal for professional staff as opposed to the bargaining agreement, item in item G. And I move on behalf of our committee to accept or to approve that contract renewal.
And I would just add for the full board, those that are not on committee, that in your board docs, you have a listing of the professional staff for the contract renewals.
Any questions or comments about that? Okay, then we'll go ahead and vote on the motion to approve the 2020-2021 contract renewals for professional staff listed on that sheet. Jenny, would you take?
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mr. Ukitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Cunardie?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
And we'll move on to... Oh, I'm sorry?
No, that's fine. That's it.
Is there anything else?
No.
That's it? Okay. The Facilities, Safety and Transportation Committee did not meet, and Policy Legislation did not meet. Okay. And Finance Committee did not.
I would say on finance, we didn't meet as a committee, but in the executive session, as we laid all the lawful, it's going to be in finance to the whole board.
Okay.
And we should probably note that Policy as well had, did not meet, but we've had some items that will be addressed in the second session.
And I'm sure that when we resume business at a more normal environment, we'll have a lot to touch on. But we will move on then to New Business, and we'll start with approval of retirements.
As an individual board member, I am going to approve the retirements of Jackie Golden or Jacqueline Golden, teacher, second grade at Masonville. And also, this is, I don't know if I want to say a stunner, but a momentous note here, Ron Stronsky, our Director of Buildings and Grounds for the District. So I'm looking for a second to that motion, yes.
Thank you, Dale. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mark. Mr. Cunardie is the second. Any questions or comments? Then we'll go ahead and take the roll.
Mr. Ukitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Cunardie?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
There are no resignations for this meeting, no approval of employment of new personnel. However, we do have approval of new support staff appointments and just one person, and that's Christina Givernan. I'm not pronouncing that right. If anybody can help me.
I think that sounds right.
That's enough. A principal secretary at the high school replacing Janet Meyer. We talked about this earlier tonight as well. That's another veteran of our district, and we'll be talking about that, I'm sure, again at a later time. So I'm moving that we approve the new staff appointments, support staff approval.
So we have a motion to approve one new hire to replace...
In Kattle, second.
In Kattle, second. Thank you, Kattle. Any comments or questions? We'll go ahead and take the roll.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Cunardie?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mr. Ukitis?
Yes.
Okay. Then the next item is approval of the 2020 summer school budget. Do I have a motion to approve? It is listed.
Project...
Project. A second. Okay, Dr. Schulman. Then any questions about the budget for summer school for this summer? Then we'll go ahead and take the roll.
Mr. Cunardie?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mr. Ukitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Then we'll move on to approval of Policy 6510, which is payroll authorization. And I hope everyone had a chance to read that and the changes for that. Do I have a motion to approve? So move. Thank you, Dr. Schulman. Second from Mr. Cunardie. Any questions?
Do we have anything that should be added there at this point from you and Pat? Okay.
Then we'll go ahead and take the roll.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mr. Ukitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Cunardie?
Yes.
Anything I don't want? We are at approval of the 2020 to 2021 high school student handbook. And normally, this would come under Policy, but since they didn't need it, will have to be an individual motion with a second, so.
I'll move to approve, just with the caveat that we all did discuss this as everybody approved a second reading. There were only minor changes made during the second reading, both, you know, to the high school, the old school, and the middle school handbooks. So really, nothing of substance, editorial changes, sorry, grammar, grammatical and grammatical and... It's organizational. Organizational. Nothing significant.
I'll second.
Thank you. So we have the motion to approve with some minor editorial changes. Any other comments or questions? Then we'll go ahead and take the roll.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mr. Ukitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Cunardie?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Okay, then we'll move on to the next item. Dr. Schulman, do you want to address?
Sure, I'll move to approve the 2020-2021 Alternative School Student Handbook.
And again, since Policy didn't meet, we need a second.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Sitwalla. Any questions about the approval of the 2020 to 2021 Alternative School Student Handbook? Seeing them, we'll take the roll.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mr. Ukitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Cunardie?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Do you want to do one more, Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Go ahead. Oh, okay.
Go ahead.
Either of you. Okay, I move that we approve the 2020-2021 Middle School Student Handbook. Again, with very minor changes made. Just a moment.
Thank you, Mrs. Steiner. And do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Cunardie? Any questions about the approval of the 2020 to 2021 Middle School Student Handbook? Then we'll go ahead and take the roll.
Mr. Ukitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Cunardie?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Okay. Pass this also. So the next item is approval of a new policy or a change in the policy on voting. And this comes from our, it has to do with continuing operations and the COVID-19 implications. So we are pursuing this because it allows us to do virtual meetings or something in an emergency, just under a very limited scope. So we have someone that wants to present...
No, just a little louder, please. Speak up.
Okay. Okay.
I'll do that.
Okay.
And I just want to point out that this, there are districts around the state that are having to put together these types of provisions so that in the event of a special meeting, such as the one we had on March 19th, if there is difficulty getting a quorum together or we can't meet because of a pandemic that we're in right now, we can have the option of doing a virtual meeting if our board president deems the situation to be a circumstances of emergency. And so that is what we have put in place. And I know I had said something wrong, but then Ryan pulled together the language for this. Am I correct?
Yeah, and I've got some details I'd like to speak to and clarify. I can move into that now or if you want, if there's a...
But let's give a second. I'm going to...
Our superintendent. Did you, you made a motion? Did you make a motion or should I?
No, you...
I'm making the motion. Okay. So I would like to make a motion that we approve the modifications of Policy 0167.1 regarding voting during emergency circumstances.
Second.
And then, did you second?
Yes.
Okay, and Mr. Ukitis seconded. So would you please get a dress?
Well, along the lines of what Sam was just speaking to, most school districts around the state are looking to make amendments or adjust policy to allow for some remote, better remote participation by board members at meetings because of the stay-at-home order and all of the recommendations to not be meeting in large groups in the public right now with the pandemic situation that we've got going on. The trick with that is we still have to abide by state laws on open meetings, and that makes things tricky a little bit. The policy amendment that we have before you here is something that we did receive from the Neola group that we work with. So there's obviously a lot of, a lot of groups, legal counsel, school districts that have been scrambling in the last couple of weeks to come up with adjustments to their policies. I think this is another good example of where we benefit from working with Neola because they really did a lot of the heavy lifting on this policy amendment, working in unison with other bylaws that we have in our policies that will afford us the opportunity at the discretion of the superintendent to exercise this bylaw to meet, have board members participate remotely during these, you know, extenuating circumstances like we're in right now. So just to be clear, the way this amendment is worded, it does give the board president the authority, the discretion to implement these remote participation for voting purposes circumstances when deemed necessary for emergency circumstances. We certainly would view the current pandemic situation to be one of those. We would anticipate as long as the stay-at-home order is in place or that there are restrictions placed on large group meetings, probably for at least the next couple of months, that we would be looking to exercise this to hold our meetings where you could choose to participate remotely and therefore be able to vote because this is a voting policy amendment. It would allow you to, during these special meetings in emergency situations, to vote remotely. I think what we have going on right now, because this has not been approved as a good example, if we have Dorothy Chaney who is participating remotely, but based on the current board policy, she's not able to vote. If this is approved, hereafter, you would be able to vote when you are participating remotely. So that's kind of a rundown of what this would involve. There's a few other procedural details that are applicable to what we're looking at, but I guess I want to, before I explain too much more, maybe just pause and see if there's any questions to what I've explained or any questions to the wording in the policy amendment that's in your board docs.
I just wanted to point out that there are sentences in here that are reminding us that we're cognizant of allowing the public to participate under an open meeting law. So we, it specifically says that the ability for the public to participate may include multiple different technology options so that it doesn't prevent their ability to attend. And the board president may also try and facilitate a public understanding of the proceedings, such as asking board members to identify themselves by name, et cetera, when they speak so that people know who is talking because we don't have the handy little signs, et cetera. And also just to make sure that only one person speaks at a time so we don't have people on technology speaking over each other. So that's all part of the language in here, just to ensure that we would do everything in our power to comply with open meeting laws. Any other questions or comments?
And this applies to all open meetings, such as committee meetings if needed. My question is, and I'm trying to read through here, maybe I missed it, is this something My question is, and I'm trying to read through here, maybe I missed it, is this something that is going to take effect only during the COVID-19 situation or will this become board policy hereafter?
Good questions. So, what I want to point to, so there's a couple of different answers to that. So, first off, I want to make reference to one of, one of the bylaw policies, which is 0131.1. I'll repeat that again if you want to make note of that to look that up. That particular bylaw does point to the fact that under, for compelling reasons, as it indicates, and we feel that this situation is one of those, that a policy amendment can take effect immediately. And that's what we are suggesting as part of this, which means normally for a policy change, you have to go through two steps. There's a first reading and it's not until after second reading, something takes effect through. We're bringing this forward with the understanding that the details that I'm referring to in .131, excuse me, 0131.1 would allow, given the compelling circumstances we're looking at, for this to take effect immediately. If you read further in the bylaw that I'm referencing, there is also reference that this amendment would automatically discontinue at the next time the board physically meets, unless at that meeting, you do the equivalent of a second reading to make it permanent policy change. So, to paraphrase, to paraphrase, if you approve this amendment, as we brought it forward to the board this evening, it takes effect immediately, which would allow us to start meeting remotely and have board members who are participating remotely vote. It would take effect immediately and would run the duration of our next meeting. At our next, our next meeting, you would have a, you would have the opportunity to decide if you want the wording change, the amendment to be permanent or if you want it to run its course. And honestly, that would be whatever next meeting we have, that may end up being a meeting that's held remotely.
And as to your, this is a voting policy, so it doesn't, we don't vote at committee meetings. We just have recommendations that come forward to the full board. So, voting only takes place.
That's true.
At a regular meeting or a special meeting. So, this is to talk about allowing voting.
Correct.
By remote technology, such as doorkeeping.
But I will add that given the circumstances that we're dealing with under this current public health emergency, we are going to be looking to, during this time period, meet as, have as infrequent meetings as possible. So, I think we would move in the direction of like what we did tonight, have most of these business items that might otherwise take place during committee, get moved into a regular board meeting, just so that we have less frequent arrangements that need to be made.
And less committee meetings?
And less committee meetings.
Yeah.
And additionally, I just wanted to emphasize that if we make this into permanent policy, it is, in the, in the language, it's very clear that this is not to be used at will, but only in situations of emergency that are deemed so by, I mean, the language says that the board president is ultimately the determiner of that, of an emergency situation that we need to institute this. So, it's going to be, I would imagine, if I understand this correctly, that this is then going to be, if we have this permanent policy, it will still be upon the action of the president each time, the board president. We use it.
Correct. That that person determines that it's warranted to exercise it.
For the upcoming meeting or whatever.
Can it be used for, say, policy meetings or any committee meetings that are deemed absolutely necessary even though there's no voting? Can you use this policy? Allow?
I think, I think in that situation, we might more, be more likely to call it a special meeting than it's to be held.
It's on your policy.
Yeah.
Can I just jump in sort of behind? Karen, one of the things that Ryan and I talked about yesterday was I have some questions about policy. You made a really good recommendation, you know, we can move forward with this policy right now because of that just-in-time need that we have. But then, more time, more than just this policy to make to have open discussions of what it looked like, be created into a regular policy, and I really like that idea. So, you know, we act on it tonight because we, this particular mechanism, we can then do a deep dive in policy at, when things come back to normal. I like that idea.
So, just a few other details that I wanted to emphasize on this amendment recommendation would be that if, that if it is approved, it does give remote participate, participating board members the ability to vote. We still have to follow quorum, you know, majority, we still have to have a majority of board members available to be able to participate, even if they are remote, to call a meeting and have a majority for quorum purposes. So, just to be clear on that as well, both physically present and remote presence will count towards having a quorum to be able to seek a majority vote. And then finally, what I want to emphasize is that you as individual board members, even if you approve this, still have, these are, we're still talking about open meetings and open meeting laws are still in place. What I'm getting at is you cannot be required to participate remotely. It is your individual choice if you want to still physically show up for these meetings, and I cannot compel you and the board president cannot compel you otherwise. You get to choose whether it's a remote or if it's a physical presence. And just like the meeting that we have here tonight, while we have no members of the public here, if the public wants to come, we cannot compel them to stay away at this point in time. Further to that point, like we're doing tonight with the live streaming, our intent is to livestream these meetings and provide every opportunity we can for the public to participate and observe these meetings that happen. So, just to be clear that that will continue. And then finally, I will just note that, to be honest, just for the physical operate, operation of these types of meetings, frankly, it would be best if we did have at least, like the board president, still physically present to run and manage the meeting. And I think that there probably will be some communication that, between myself and Jenny, that we would have with all of you to get a sense and feel for how many, what you're planning to do on an individual board member basis. Because frankly, we need to know if nobody's planning to attend physically, that creates some logistical challenges that we need to be prepared for. And we also have to recognize, as is in the, in the policies, that we are limited by the technology. And we could have the best of intentions to have a meeting that all seven of you are participating, some physically, some remotely, and we run into a technology challenge where you're cutting out. We may have to excuse you from it or we might not be able to accommodate what that remote participation looks like. In some cases, it might be like what's happening here with Dorothy participating through teams that are Microsoft teams. That's our primary intent and hope right now. But we might, under certain circumstances, it might have to be a phone call where we hear your voice, but we cannot physically see you participating through, you know, the video presentation part of it.
That was a good summary. Any other questions or? You did a good job of explaining lots of detail there for me. Thank you. Then we'll go ahead and take the vote. We have the motion on the floor to approve policy 0167.1 on voting. And would you take the vote?
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Cunrody?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwala?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mr. Yucitis?
Yes.
Then we have one more item. And this has to do with a consideration and potential approval for resolution on request for the DPI to grant a waiver from the hours of instruction requirement pursuant to Wisconsin statute 118.38 due to the COVID-19 public health emergency. So, do we have any input from the public?
Yeah, I, not that I'm aware of, but I guess if I could just say, just to specify, especially for people who may be watching the meeting here through the livestream, that in this portion of our agenda, we are officially moving into what is considered a public hearing. And I guess either, I guess I could, or if you want to, Frances, I think it would be good, considering that this is a public hearing, to read from the way the agenda is shown, and I will go ahead and do that if you would like me to. So, this relates to what the purpose of the public hearing is all about. Members of the Board of Education of the School District of Marshfield will conduct a public hearing for the purposes of allowing citizens the opportunity to provide input on the proposed request for DPI waiver from the hours of instruction required pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 118.38 due to the COVID-19 public health emergency. Obviously, we're, we're living in extraordinary times, and the public is recommended to not convene in large groups, which really makes holding a public hearing a challenge. For those purposes and to try to make every effort to have the public have the opportunity to participate in this public hearing and submit questions or comments, we did add to the notice that went out for this public hearing the following statement, that due to the safe-at-home order, citizens not able to attend in person but would like to provide input on the proposed waiver request can submit comments to, this is our board secretary, Jenny Hague, to her email address, haguej@marshfieldschools.org. And we had asked that all comments be received by four o'clock this afternoon so that we would have time to collect them and have them prepared for the board so that if you did have questions or comments, they could be addressed by the Board of Education during the public hearing. Now, that being said, again, just to clarify, Jenny, we did not receive any comments or questions.
Correct.
Good.
And I realize it was less than perfect to have to include this in the media notice and public notice of the hearing, that we were doing the best we could to allow a window of opportunity for public comment through email or phone or whatever way they would like to convey.
Right, and I guess before talking about this a little bit further, I think this might be, again, for those that are from the public that are watching the livestream, I think this would be a good opportunity to speak to, you know, something, Frances, you and I were talking about before the meeting started a little bit earlier this afternoon, you know, the important note with everything that public schools are dealing with right now, like a lot of us, I mean, there's so much coming at us fast and furious, we're having to change longstanding normal practices. And in the case of schools in particular, I, I think it's important to know with the public that we are a highly, highly regulated institution, that the vast majority of what we do in a public school system is regulated by state and federal laws. And what's challenging, especially during extreme periods like this, is even despite the stay-at-home orders and the statewide mandatory school closures and all of the craziness that's going on in the world right now, that short of legislative action or, in the case of the stay-at-home order, even in the case of action by the governor, we still are required to adhere to state statute if those statutes aren't changed. So, in this situation, the Department of Public Instruction is working with schools on waiving some of these regulations that we're facing. But in the case like the required hours of instruction that we have to adhere to, the state law does say that you have to hold a public hearing in order to pursue that waiver. So, the DPI has been very clear with us that while they're going to be very open and flexible and accommodating with school districts on approving those waiver requests, they have told us that you still have to follow the state statute by holding the public hearing, which is why we are doing this this evening. So, a little bit further to that point, I guess I would just add that the intent here, if the board does approve the request for waiver or authorize the resolution that is in your board docs, that's actually item B under the public hearing part of the agenda, you can click on it and open what the resolution looks like. If you do motion and second and approve that resolution, this is something that is early, is first thing tomorrow morning, that I will be submitting to the DPI to approve this waiver request. You know, one other thing I want to note is while we did not have any official submissions of comments or questions, I, you know, I did end up having a phone conversation with a mother of students in our district during the date, the workday today, and the topic of this waiver request did come up. While this was not submitted as an official question or comment, I think it does kind of fall in line with what might be on some members of the public's mind, and that is, you know, the questions of, you know, in seeking this waiver, does the district still plan on trying to meet or achieve as close as possible those hours of instruction? And the answer to that question frankly is no, we're not. And the reason for that is we've already been closed for, I believe by my count, I think this is 13, our 13th day of closure. This closure is indefinite. While the state has not made any official decisions, as I noted in the letter that went to parents on Monday, our, our state superintendent is advising us to plan as though schools will not be called back into session before the end of the school year. If that were to be the case, what I'm getting at here is that's approximately 55 school days that we are going to be closed for. To try to make up the hours for those approximately 55 days would require us to, stay at home and this closure is lifted, let's just say hypothetically it was lifted the first week of June, we basically would have to hold classes the entire summer to recoup and make up all of those hours. That's just really not feasible considering activities during the summer, everybody's regular lives and things that happen in your summertime, as well as the fact that we want to be ready to hopefully be up and running with a regular, normal school year starting in the fall with the September 1 start for the 2021 school year.
And maybe even summer school.
Right. So, and yes, we don't know how summer school may or may not be affected by everything that's going on. So, I guess it's important, if nothing else, to be clear on that one detail, that through this waiver request that we're asking you to authorize through the resolution, the district does not intend to make up the hours this year. We're going to continue to do remote instruction the best we can under the format we're operating under, which involves a changeover effective next week, to try and do the best we can move forward with advancing our curriculum. But as noted in the letter I sent home earlier this week, we're going to be moving forward with this time being considered optional participation. That's not officially graded though. Again, for parents who may be watching, we are working on plans, especially when it comes to issuing credits and graduation and all of that, there's a lot of decisions making that is still in process, and we will continue to communicate out what those plans are as soon as we finalize decisions and we're in a position to, to get that information out to the public.
Thank you for all of them. And we don't have a motion yet, so if a board member would like to make a motion to approve this resolution, you could go ahead and read the resolution and then we would open it up for a second.
I might have one more question. I'm not sure if this applies or not to what we're talking about here, but I look at, at the opening of most of our meetings, we also have that time where we have communication from the public. How does that fit into what we're doing here and how might that be accomplished by someone who'd like to address the board?
So, so to be clear and maybe recap a little bit, the meeting that we are sitting in right now is an open-to-the-public meeting.
Right.
The doors are open, they're unlocked. The meeting was noticed last week. Even despite the stay-at-home order, the people from the public could have still come physically to this meeting, and had they been here, they would have had the opportunity to do exactly what you just mentioned, Dale. They could have made comments, they could have asked questions, we could have talked about those, I could have helped respond to those. The explanation that I just provided, because we're livestreamed here, was to try to maybe substitute for what a few of the questions or comments may have been if there were people physically here to ask them. Above and beyond that, that's why the, the highlighted prompt for the public that they had the opportunity to email in questions, if they had them, but couldn't be here in person, that's why we have that notification. And again, just to be clear, we did not receive any inquiries or comments or questions from the public via email in advance.
And we have had situations during those opportunities for communication from the public in the past where someone from the public feels strongly about an issue and gets up and has a, is it a two-minute or three-minute time period comment during that time? How might they do that? Then would that be present, they would have to actually come to a meeting then, I suppose, physically here, I would guess.
Or they could have sent an email to Jenny or maybe.
Dale, you're referring to.
In the future.
Communications piece that's on the regular agenda.
But, but once we pass the resolution, just, just like any public hearing, once that window of opportunity has been presented, then you move on to action by the board. So, that's the way the agenda is set up.
I would just like to mention to the public watching this, we always get to a point in our agenda where we ask, we ask our board secretary if she has received any communication from the public. And if you do, however this is going to work in the future, if you do attend a regular board. board meeting in public, one of our monthly board meetings, there is a form that you can fill out as you come in the door, noting that you would like to have some time to present before the Board of Education. Now, the board at that time does not take any action on what you comment on, but it does give you a chance to go ahead and state your case and make your point. But when we talk about communications from the public, that's what we're talking about. We're talking about, for the most part, that notice that person signs when they come into a board meeting to be allowed to speak that night at the communications period for a board meeting. So I'm just trying to make that clear.
There is a distinction between the communications from the public on any topic, that we have the opportunity for at the beginning of a board meeting, and a public hearing on a particular topic, which is what this media notice references.
Right.
So in the past, when we had proposals to remodel the middle school or whatever, we've had a public hearing, and people could come and
Those are different
Get information and present opinions to the board. So this is more in line with that. And as I said, it's less than perfect, but we're doing our best to comply with all the laws, and yet put our district in a position to accommodate all that is going on with the COVID-19 stay-at-home orders. So that's just where we're at. It's an unusual time, and so this is a little bit unusual.
And I would just say that I would tend to believe the lack of submissions fall in line with people understanding the necessity of authorizing this resolution.
So we will move on, unless there's anything else. We'll move on to looking for a motion to approve. Okay, Dr. Schulman?
So should we read the resolution?
Yes.
Or just therefore it will be resolved that?
I'm sorry.
Do you need to read the whole document?
Yeah, she
I'm going to read the whole document.
Do you need a second before?
Okay, I second.
Okay.
School Board Resolution for the Waiver of Certain School Board or School District Requirements Pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 118.38, parentheses 1 and 1M. Whereas Wisconsin Statute 118.38, sub 1, and Wisconsin Administrative
Statute PI.
Statute PI 8.01, parentheses 4. Authorize school boards to request the Department of Public Instruction to waive any school board or school district requirement in Wisconsin Statute Chapters 115 to 121, or in the Administrative Rules promulgated by the Department under the authority of those chapters. And whereas Wisconsin Statute 118, State Statute 118.38, 1B, requires that before requesting a waiver, a school board shall hold a public hearing in the school district on the request for a waiver of any requirement in Wisconsin Statute Chapter 115, Statute Chapters 155 to 121. And whereas Wisconsin's Statute 118.38, 1M, requires that, quote, "The school board shall specify in its request for a waiver, its reason for requesting a waiver," unquote, "which includes the March 24, 2020 Emergency Order Number 12 of Governor Evers requiring all individuals present within the state of Wisconsin to stay at home or at their place of residence, with limited exceptions, beginning March 25, 2020, and continuing through A.A. on April 24, 2020. With the exception for activities facilitating distance learning or virtual learning, the order continued the closure of all public and private K-12 schools for public instruction and extracurricular activities as set forth in previous emergency orders. Now therefore be resolved that, 1, on April 8, 2020, the Board of Education held a hearing in satisfaction of Wisconsin State Statute 118.38, 1B, concerning requests for waivers of the requirements identified herein. And 2, in compliance with Wisconsin State Statutes 118.38, 1 and 1M. And for the reasons set forth herein, the Board of Education hereby directs the Superintendent or has heard this amending to apply on behalf of the Board to the Office of the Superintendent for Public Instruction, OSPI, for the waiver of the following. Waiver of the requirement, Wisconsin Statute 121.02I?
1F.
1F. And the Administrative Rules promulgated by the Department requiring required instructional hours for students for the 2019-2020 school year, only due to the COVID-19 public health emergency. Be it further resolved that execution of this resolution is conclusive evidence of the Board of Education's approval of this section and of the authority granted herein in a duly noticed meeting of the Board held on April 8, 2020. Signed, the United School District of Marshfield Board of Education.
So just to clarify, our previous comments were part of the public hearing section. So now, if anyone has any questions or comments on the motion to approve this resolution, I'm hoping for that. Any comments or questions? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and take the vote.
Mr. Carrari?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwala?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Diokitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Then that brings us to the point where I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Hello?
Thank you. So I have that first by Dr. Sitwala, and a second by Mr. Carrari. And everyone said aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, for being here and for seeing